Call this meeting to order if you'd all rise. Commissioner McDaniel, will you lead us in prayer?
I will. Turn off my phone. Our Father in Heaven, we love thee and we're thankful for the opportunity to meet here together, all citizens. We ask blessings upon us and all that we do will do things in thy favor. We're thankful for all that we have, thankful that we live in America for the freedoms that we have. Please bless our military and our first responders and best blessings upon Israel and all innocent people everywhere. We love thee and need thee and help us promote the spirit of peace and bless us with a good Christmas season and think of others. We love thee and acknowledge thy hand in all things and these things we say in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
If you'd follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Christians, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any? I guess we can start into the recognition. So we have a recognition, First T Teacher of the Year. It's a presentation by our First T Four Corners Executive Director Tina Pacheco. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. First T Four Corners is very excited to share that Lane Frazier, a PE teacher at Eva B. Stokely Elementary in Shiprock, has been named the 2024 First T Teacher of the Year. Lane is recognized as one of more than 34,000 elementary teachers nationwide who incorporate First T's Youth Development Program in their classes. For over 10 years, Lane has brought the golf, the game of golf to kids in Shiprock, many of whom have never stepped onto a golf course, giving them a chance to learn the game while embracing values like integrity, perseverance, and respect. His creativity shines through in initiatives like Field Days at Riverview. By bringing his classes to Riverview, we are able to bridge the gap between gym-based practice and real-world experience of playing on a golf turn, golf course. Lane ensures that every child, regardless of their ability, is able to fully participate. This hands-on approach has sparked a genuine love of golf and the game in countless students, leaving a lasting impact far beyond the sport itself. In additional, in addition to this national recognition, the award comes with a $25,000 donation from Golf Digest, which will be shared between Lane's classroom and our local First T Chapter. This support will allow us to continue creating opportunities for kids in San Juan County. Lane will also be featured in the next Golf Digest edition. Lane's work is a testament to the incredible impact one teacher can have, not just in his classroom, but in his entire community. We are so proud of him and the recognition he has brought to his school, San Juan County, and the First T Program. Lane was recognized last week at our national convention in Phoenix, and Golf Digest produced this video that I'd like to share with you. Lane was unable to be here this afternoon, but we are excited to share this information with you, so.
How many thousand teachers did you say?
There's 34,000 teachers across the United States.
Thirty-four thousand teachers, and somebody applied for him, sent him in, and he got picked out of 34,000 teachers?
Yes.
That's incredible.
It's, it's really great. He's been, like I say, part of the First T Program for over 10 years. He's taken our curriculum and matched it with the Common Core standards. Tracks the progress of the kids from kindergarten through fifth grade, and he's just passionate about it, so we're really proud of him, so.
That's amazing.
Just, I'd like to also take a moment to thank the Commission for your ongoing support of Riverview Golf Course. We can have the most impactful programs, but without a place to deliver them, none of it would be possible. Riverview is more than just a golf course, it's a gathering place for our community. On any typical week, Riverview hosts life-changing programs reaching junior golfers, veterans, high school athletes, athletes with special needs, families, tournament players, nonprofits raising money, and community coming together to enjoy recreation and outdoors. So on behalf of First T Four Corners, thank you for your partnership and all you do for us.
Thank you. And if anybody bounces into or comes across Mr. Frazier, make sure you congratulate him, since we weren't able to do it here. Make sure that we continue to give him support and congratulate him on that, on this award. That's amazing.
And we have something for.
Yeah. For Mr. Lanier, but for each of our Commissioners, just a token of thanks for all you guys do to support our First T Program and the golf course.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to our regular meeting. Is the agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, yes, agenda is as presented, no need for changes.
I'll stand for a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda of December 3, 2024.
Second?
Having been moved and seconded, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, I presume it passed unanimously. Oh, and I, I think just for the, the recording or the record, Commissioner Lanier is absent tonight. He's fulfilling his duties to the San Juan County Water Commission at a, at a national conference, so he's, I think, mid-flight right now, maybe, or unavailable to attend, but I know he was gonna try, but obviously he, I don't, I don't think he's on the, on the computer. So we'd excuse him for that, I guess, just for that, since he's actually doing something for the Commission, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to our consent agenda, which is number one, consideration of the fiscal year 2025 budget adjustment number six, resolution number 242540. Number two, consideration of SCBA fiscal year 2024 Assistance for Firefighters Grant Funding Application number three, consideration of resolution number 242539 in support of Kirtland Multi-Use Path Phase III Transportation Alternatives Program Grant Application to the New Mexico Department of Transportation. Say that one fast five times. Consideration of update to the temporary employee for wildland fire assignment pay rates and adjustment for reimbursement for wet rate or dry rate. Number five, consideration of Award of Proposal Number 24-25-10, truancy reduction services to San Juan County Partnership, Inc. of Farmington, New Mexico. Number six, consideration of Award of Bid Number 24258 Bridge 8111 Replacement Project on San Juan County Road 3500 to Haas Contracting Company, Inc. of Albuquerque, New Mexico. Number seven, consideration of bid number 24259 Bridge 3121 Replacement Project on San Juan County Road 3000. Is it Haas?
Hase, I believe.
Hasi.
Hasi Contracting Company, Inc. of Albuquerque, New Mexico. Number eight, consideration of resolution number 242537, appointing a cannabis variance hearing officer to fill, to fill the vacancy to T. Ryan Lane of Aztec, New Mexico. That is our consent agenda. I'd stand for a motion.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as is.
Second?
Having been moved and seconded, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, I presume it passed unanimously. That brings us to our new business agenda. Item number one, overview and update from North Path in, in Ven, I can't, say it for me.
Invenergy.
Invenergy.
Yes.
Transmission LLC project, Jamie Aranda. Welcome.
Thank you.
Invenergy.
Great, thank you, Chairman, members of the Commission, for having me here today. Thank you, Manager Stark, for allowing me to be here, and what a great idea. I'm here to introduce myself. I'm Jamie Aranda, the local and community affairs director for Invenergy, based here in New Mexico, working on the North Path Transmission Project. I've give you a high-level overview of the project and the company. Some of you may be familiar with this, but I think it's a good time to check in with you all and give you, give you all the details again. So, next slide. There we go, thank you. To tell you a little bit about Invenergy, we've been successfully developing and executing clean energy projects for 23 years, which is a long time in the clean energy space. We've built a diverse portfolio of energy projects in wind, solar, storage, and natural gas generation. The company successfully developed the Sagamore Wind Project right here in New Mexico in Roosevelt County. In recent years, we've started developing offshore wind, hydrogen, and transmission projects, and to date, we've developed over 4,000 miles of transmission and collection lines. The company currently invests over $400 million annually in communities around the world and maintain active relationships with over 12,000 landowners. Today, I'm here to tell you about our transmission project called North Path, which we are developing here in northern New Mexico. Next slide. But before we talk about the details of the project, I want to mention a unique partnership between New Mexico Renewable Energy Transmission Authority, also known as RITA, and Invenergy Transmission. This partnership was announced in January 2023, and as some of you might know, transmission projects are inherently lengthy and very complex. With RITA's rigorous review process, along with the oversight of its independent board, it will ensure continual objective and thorough evaluation of this transmission project. Next slide, please. Now, the high-level details of this particular project. North Path aims to enhance transmission infrastructure, enabling efficient delivery of sustainable energy. It's a 400-mile high-voltage direct current transmission line from Union County in the northeast part of our state to a point of interconnection right here in San Juan County. By expanding and modernizing our grid, the North Path Transmission Project strengthens grid security, resiliency, while satisfying the growing demand in sustainable energy in the region. It should be noted that we are in the very early development stages of this project, so some of this information may not be new to you, and I may not have all the answers to your questions this evening. Next slide, please. In 2021, Invenergy conducted a high-level study to determine the feasibility and constructibility from Union County to San Juan County. This feasibility study led to a routing study, which on the map is the area of the dotted line, and that's our routing study, and it is roughly 25-mile wide on average. That's just the routing study area. Those studies then further refined to create a one-mile corridor shown by the green line on the map. Within these corridors, there are opportunities to parallel existing transmission lines, roads, railroads, pipelines, et cetera. This helps avoid major constraints to routing a transmission line, for example, rugged terrain, environmentally and culturally sensitive areas, and avoiding densely populated areas. I want to emphasize our commitment to best practice for infrastructure siting, including this paralleling of existing infrastructure where possible, and avoiding sensitive resources. Next slide. So now for some of the technical stuff. High voltage, this again is a high-voltage direct current line, and it can carry the same amount of energy as alternating current lines, but over longer distances while using narrower rights of ways with fewer structures. Utilizing a direct current, or also known as a DC line, allows for more power to be delivered across this particular project, 400 miles, and it, the typical structure is about 135 feet tall with three to four structures per mile. The right-of-way path will be approximately 200 feet wide. Next slide, please. This is a snapshot of the timeline. As mentioned before, building transmission lines is lengthy and complex and can take anywhere from 10 to 20 years to develop and construct. And again, we are in the early development stages of this project. Our current objective is working on finalizing the route, which includes discussions with landowners, tribes, and other potential right-of-way partners, along with early and consistent engagement with local communities and leaders like you all. Now, my favorite slide is commitment to community. We are active in all route counties in New Mexico, including right here in San Juan County. We've, we've support the San Juan Economic Development Group here today, thank you for supporting me, and County Fair. We've been sponsors of the County Fair as well. To date, the company has invested over $200,000 supporting local and tribal community initiatives from 2022 to 2024. My goal is to continue to meet and, and communicate regularly with you all and other community stakeholders throughout the route host communities. So that concludes my presentation, and I stand for any discussion or questions.
What type of power is gonna be sent over? Is it wind-generated in Union?
Yes, wind generation. The idea came from a RITA study, I believe it was in 2017, of where New Mexico's potential for energy generation, so eastern part of the state, connecting to existing infrastructure here in the Four Corners area.
We have lots of natural gas in San Juan County. Energy's interested in investing here.
I would love an offline discussion with you all.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that was my question, how does it affect the oil and gas industry? But you kind of answered that for now.
I think the potential, I mean, we, we'd be willing to entertain discussion.
And how many jobs is this gonna create? And the third part of the question, the third question is, will you be hiring local workers when you get to San Juan County area?
Thank you, Commissioner, for the questions. So how many jobs? We know that there'll be thousands in the construction period, and then dozens operating in maintenance throughout the duration of the project, or afterwards, while it's operating. I'm currently working with our in-house economist, who is using newer models to develop more concrete numbers. I'd love to come back to the Commission when that's ready, maybe Q1, and discuss some of those numbers with you all. To hire local workforce, a part of my role is to gather workforce opportunity, training opportunities throughout the state, local communities, any kind of manufacturing, and then provide that to our project management team and contractors once we get to that point, so we can evaluate what jobs are available here in state.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we share the air with the creatures, and is it taken into consideration, you know, their migratory patterns and keeping them safe?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, for the question. We do a very thorough environmental study, so what you saw on the map in the presentation does take into, into account some migratory paths, as well as, both in air and on land. So we'll continue to evaluate. I know that the company also uses technology online to, like, bird diverters and things like that on the line, if there's any potential risk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. Appreciate you coming to present.
Thank you, yes, and I'm located here in New Mexico. I'll hope to come back and visit you soon. Again, thank you for your time.
Very well, thank you. All right, that brings us to item number two, consideration of application for variants from San Juan County Cannabis Regulation Ordinance Number 120 for LL Organic LLC, 3520 U.S. 64 Water Flow, New Mexico. It's an action item presented by Michelle Chubitillen. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, if I may briefly make a statement that Mr. Sawyer usually makes relating to the variance process and the stage that we're at in, in this particular case. We're here today for the Commission to review the findings of the hearing officer. A public hearing has already been conducted in this matter, where all evidence was collected, and everyone who was interested had, had an opportunity to speak and present evidence to the hearing officer. So we will not be conducting a new hearing today. There won't be a public hearing where anyone gets to speak or ask additional questions. It's simply a review of the record that you already have before you, and that, that's all.
So it's either vote to approve or vote to deny?
You could make changes to the hearing officer's recommendation if you'd like. There just won't be a new hearing where the public would get to provide additional input.
Very well. All right, does, I'll let you continue.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, LL Organics LLC submitted a variance petition application to Community Development Department on July 30, 2024, seeking a variance from Section 3A of Ordinance Number 120, the minimum separation distance. LL Organics wishes to start an indoor cannabis production operation within an already existing commercial structure located at 3530 U.S. 64 in Water Flow, New Mexico. The proposed grow operation is within 300 feet of one residence measuring 290 feet from the proposed grow, and one community center, the Water Flow Community Hall, measuring 275 feet from the proposed grow. Applicant is seeking a variance to last the life of the business at this location. A public hearing was held before hearing officer Douglas A. Echols on September 9, 2024. After the hearing, staff was informed of additional information related to the applicant and the property proposed for this establishment, and it determined a second hearing was necessary to present additional evidence to the hearing officer. The second hearing was held on November 13, 2024. Members of the neighborhood and representatives from the community center appeared at both hearings to voice opposition to the variance. Hearing Officer Echols submitted written findings and conclusions and recommends the request for variance be denied. I stand for questions.
Any questions? I'll stand for a motion.
I'll make the motion. If they're recommending denial, I'll make the motion that we go along with that as stated.
So you're moving that we deny the variance?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any, those in favor of the motion to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Did everybody have an opportunity to, to vote?
Aye.
Okay.
To support, to support the, the denying the variance, Commissioner Totajini?
What was that?
I'm sorry, I just want to clarify that your, your aye was, that you were supporting the motion to deny.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I think that then is unanimous to support the motion to deny the variance. All right, that brings us to item number three, consideration of adoption of amended and restated San Juan County Ordinance Number 76, the Manufacturer Home Parks and Recreational Vehicle Parks Ordinance, presented by Mr. Sebedra.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, County Commission. I come before you, consideration of adoption of amendment and restated San Juan County Ordinance Number 76, the Manufacturer Home Parks and Recreational Vehicle Parks Ordinance. Staff is requesting changes to Ordinance Number 76, San Juan County's Manufactured Home and Recreational Vehicle Park Ordinance in order to allow tiny homes, tiny home parks in the incorporated area of San Juan County. Proposed changes include the addition of tiny homes throughout the ordinance, prohibiting mixed use, and basically what that is, is you, you don't have a mobile home, RV, and tiny homes, you'll have some separation. However, the applicant is always able to submit a plan, and it will be at the discretion of the Community Development Administrator to, to approve or deny. A summary of the proposed, excuse me, a notice of intent to amend and restate was approved by the Commission at the November 12 meeting and was published in the Tri-City Record on Friday, November 15. To date, we haven't heard any comments or concerns regarding the changes to Ordinance Number 76. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? I'll stand for a motion.
I move that we adopt the amended restated San Juan County Ordinance Number 76, the Manufacturer Home Parks and Recreational Vehicle Parks Ordinance.
I'll second that.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I presume it passed unanimously. Thank you. Brings us to item number four, consideration of resolution number 242538, establishing salaries for newly elected or re-elected county officers and providing for a salary increase for subsequent terms, as presented by our county manager, Mike Stark.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. In this recent 2024 general election, the voters of the state of New Mexico approved Constitutional Amendment Number Four, amending Article 10, Section 1 of the New Mexico Constitution to provide salaries of county officers to be established by the Board of County Commissioners of the various counties in New Mexico. This amendment was proposed by the legislature and, and the governor, and appeared on the ballot, quite frankly, due to the inability of the state legislature to increase salaries on a consistent basis. The last increase granted by the legislature was in 2018, which has left elected official pay low compared to, to the market. Article 4, Section 27 of the New Mexico Constitution does still remain in effect, and that prohibits the increase of county officers' pay during the, the term of their office. So what So what this means is, if the commission is interested in seeing pay increase for those newly elected or re-elected elected county elected officials, that would have to be done for those that would be impacted before January 1st of next year, the start of their new terms.
So I don't get to try to make it retroactive for the last two or three years?
Mr. Chair, you would not. Sorry to inform you of that.
Dang it.
San Juan County has utilized an outside compensation consultant firm over the past four years to evaluate compensation across all positions in the county to ensure that we have both external market equity as well as internal position equity. And this is to, you know, so we reached out to Valiant, who currently has been providing that service to us and to provide the commission with a fair and objective framework, hopefully, for each elected official's job duties, you know, management responsibilities such as budget and the number of employees and, you know, overall operational demands associated with each of the respected offices. And so Valiant took our current compensation step and grade matrix and developed a recommendation to the commission that fits within that existing compensation plan. So, and that data has been provided to you in your packet. You'll see the very last page of matrix that shows the proposed hourly rate multiplied out by 2,080 hours, you know, traditional 40-hour work week that would give you the annual salaries. In addition, this resolution also contemplates how to provide increases to elected officials as a result of cost of living, but also to maintain parity with county employee salaries. And so, you know, part of why we're in this position is because that hasn't happened at the state level. And so in this resolution, we're suggesting that each elected officer and each new term be increased or decreased, if there was a decrease in pay countywide, in the amounts equal to the cumulative merit and cost of living raises or reductions a regular county employee would have received during the preceding term. So probably the easiest way to share an example, let's just say that, you know, an elected official during the four-year term, county employees received a 3% increase every year. What would happen is you couldn't do mid-cycle increases, right? That's prohibited. But we would look back over that four-year term if it was a 12% increase aggregate over the last four years. That would be multiplied out to the elected official's salary, and the start of that new term would cover that additional pay that all of the other county employees had received.
So it'll be updated every four years?
Correct. Mr. Chair, with the exception of those that would be starting a new term in two years.
Because we're hitting this- Then every four years after that.
Then every four years after that. That is correct. In addition, included in this resolution, we're, you know, making sure that elected officials have a base salary. But also, and these questions come up before, and this is the opportunity to kind of make sure there's full clarity and correct, the additional fees or allowances or benefits or reimbursements that are allowed for other public employees under the law, you know, for travel, for example, for, you know, one of the benefits we offer employees is a fitness reimbursement of $200 per year if you're meeting the requirements of the program. Elected officers, officials would be eligible for such programs that we have in the county. And that hasn't been the case previously. So we want to make sure that elected officials are afforded that same opportunity as all other employees. If the commission approves the resolution, just before you tonight, you'd be adopting a rate specific to a stepping grade of 6-1 within the matrix, pay matrix for elected officials within our current compensation plan. And I also want to note that it did come up today in our department head meeting, and we had Mr. Sawyer was present for that and researched, I think, along with Ms. Wayne. If we had a scenario by which, normally there's 26 pays within a year. If we had a year, and it happens from time to time where there's 27 pays, and we budget for that accordingly when such a year happens like that, where you might have three pay periods within one month, and then, of course, that results in additional pay, an additional pay for the year, that elected officials would be eligible for that 27th pay, similar to that of other county employees. So what we're proposing to you in terms of the resolution drafted up by the legal department is to try to make the pay structure for elected officials as similar to other employees in the county as possible. So that includes the other special pays that are within the current handbook. So with that, I can stand for any questions you might have related to this item.
Can you explain the process a little better about the salary consultant firm, who it was, and how we got to that?
Sure. So, you know, we wanted to be able to bring forth to you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, you know, a number by which for each of these elected officials that fits within the current county compensation plan. So we utilize Valiant, a consulting firm out of Albuquerque that's worked with us the last two years, and they work with other counties in the state. And they utilized, at least for the positions of the assessor clerk, treasurer, and sheriff, utilized the existing job descriptions for the undersheriff, chief deputy assessor, chief deputy treasurer, chief deputy clerk, and use that as a basis for determining what the roles, job duties, and responsibilities are with each, for each elected official, assuming that at a minimum, the elected official is doing at least what the deputy is doing. And so, and then, of course, analyzing that level of responsibility to the rest of our matrix. In essence, the elected officials, at least related to the sheriff, assessor, clerk, and treasurer, are fitting in within the kind of the executive pay band here in the county. So that's all of the department heads that we have that are in that pay band. So that's where they're in essence fitting within our current compensation plan. The county commissioners and probate judge have always been on a scale that's been a little lower than the elected officials serving those other capacities. And there wasn't really a job description, per se, to base and value the position on. But one of the things we did is we researched, well, what is the average hourly wage in San Juan County? And the average hourly wage in San Juan County is $26.61. And that's what Valiant ended up proposing for the pay associated with the five county commissioners as well as the probate judge. And to make those exactly the same, in the past, the probate judge was at a slightly lower rate than the county commissioners. So to date, you know, county commissioners are at $39,106, the probate judge is at $38,114. So it just made sense to consolidate those. That was recommended to us by Valiant to make those similar.
And I can attest that most county commissioners are at best just average, so. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Stark, everyone have input with you on this? Am I correct?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Totacini, myself, Mr. Sebedra, Commissioner Fortner, Lanier, as well as the incoming clerk-elect, the current county treasurer and current county assessor, were able to meet and to discuss about the process and the methodology that was going to be utilized. The sheriff was not available for that meeting, but subsequently followed up with a meeting last week with the Commissioners Fortner and Lanier. And I was not available, I was out of town visiting my dad. Mr. Sebedra filled in, so yes, those meetings did take place and made sure that there was communication with all the elected officials.
Mr. Chair, my father-in-law is a former coat talker, and he also, when he came back from the service, ran for elected office, and he was a Navajo Nation Tribal Council delegate. And he always told me, when you're an elected official, there's a lot of wear and tear on you. And so I think it's, if this is okay with the state of New Mexico, and after the discussion with the ones in elected office, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to approve this resolution of Number 24-25-38, establishing salaries for newly elected or re-elected county officers and providing for a salary increase for subsequent terms.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion or questions? Not hearing any, do I need to do a roll call vote or?
I would recommend it.
Okay, we will, having not hearing any other discussion or questions, we'll conduct a roll call vote. Commissioner McDaniel?
Aye.
Commissioner Totacini?
Aye.
Commissioner Fortner?
Aye.
And I'm for as well, so it passes unanimously with the commissioners that are present today. Thank you, Mr. Stark. That brings us to a report from county manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple items to update you on. First off, I know how involved this commission has been with the related replacement power case with Public Service County of New Mexico, going back to the Energy Transition Act. And last week, you know, there's been some discussion about whether or not PNM was going to meet the requirements of the Energy Transition Act of replacing up to 450 megawatts of power. We do have a project in place today, the DE Shaw Renewable Energy Project, east of San Juan Generating Station. It's a 300-megawatt project, but we had not heard of plans for the additional replacement power. At one time, there was a project that was being considered from a firm in California back in 2021 for another 130 megawatts, proposed on some state land, just north of actually Riverview Golf Course and into the east off of Twin Peaks Boulevard. That project did not make it to the finish line, so the community's been left hanging, wanting to know, is the additional power going to be replaced? And this commission, I know, has been advocating very strongly that PNM would move forward with making good on the 450 megawatts. And so I'm happy to report, and actually, PNM reported last week, that they're proposing in their Integrated Resource Plan for 2028, an additional 130 megawatts. Project now is being revived as the Sun Belt Project. It's 100 megawatts of solar, 30 megawatts of battery storage, and they also are suggesting that there could be an additional 20 megawatts of battery that could be added to the project as well. This would need Public Regulation Commission approval, so that's, you know, this is not a done deal by any means. But it's welcome news, because this means a few, you know, additional investment into our community. The 130-megawatt package would amount to $220 million in new capital investment here. The 150 megawatts, if they were to build that out, would add another $32 million to the mix, so that would be 252 million of additional power that would be located within the central consolidated school district here in San Juan County. And then, of course, is the school district, which has suffered the most from the closure of San Juan Generating Station. So I just wanted to update you all, because I know how hard you have worked to make that a reality, and we're happy that PNM is going to move forward with that. It is time to get the golden shovels out again. We are doing a groundbreaking on December 17th. Hopefully, this works out for you all right before the next county commission meeting at 2:00 PM. Hoping we have good weather, so we're not standing out there in the freezing cold watching it snow, which we've done that before. But that's to celebrate the new, the groundbreaking of the new county extension office. So we'll be getting invitations out on that shortly, and just want to make sure you all are aware of that. And last but not least, I'm happy to report that some hardware has come back to San Juan County.
Yay, all right.
The very prestigious Mr. Potato Head trophy has made it back to San Juan County, and that's the result of all the entities that participate in that, the counties, the county and the municipalities, of course, internally here at the county, and we have an internal competition with our departments. But, boy, what a tremendous effort in terms of the amount of food that was raised. It just goes to show the, you know, the employees here that give so graciously during a time when, you know, food is needed at Echo. 26.73 pounds of food was donated per San Juan County employee. That's out of 630 employees. That's impressive, that that much food was donated. And the winning department here, and I had presented this this morning to Fire and Rescue, their department won the internal competition. They brought in an amazing 162.1 pounds per employee. And, you know, here, of course, the real winners in all this are community, because of all the food that's available at the Echo Food Bank now. And this is the largest food drive that Echo has in the community, is this annual competition. We're now in year 15, and in 15 years of doing this, over 125 tons, 250,000 pounds of food have been donated to Echo from this drive. So I just want to say how proud I am of all of our county employees and how gracious they are in opening up their wallets and giving back to the community. We're fortunate to have such a great group here at San Juan County, and, of course, all the other municipalities that participated as well. Kudos to everyone, and just wanted to share this bit of good news with you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to acknowledge Debbie Dennison, who used to work here, and she was so enthusiastic about raising all that food and working with the departments, and I just wanted to acknowledge her.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say thank you, too, just to reiterate what you said. How many years has San Juan County had that?
You know, this is-
I see two on this.
Yeah, going back to 2009. No, we didn't start the competition with the municipalities until 2010. So one, two, three, four years.
That's awesome.
We've won it. And, you know, we have the heaviest lift, because we have, between us and the city of Farmington, we have a lot of employees relative to municipalities of Aztec and Bloomfield. So on a per-pound basis-
And it's not total weight, it's weight per employee.
Per employee. So that makes it a little more difficult for us to win the trophy.
And where does that food go?
Yeah, it all goes to Echo. And so it's a combination of food, as well as, for every dollar that was contributed, that equates to three pounds of food. And that was instituted a few years back in a way to spread out some of the food donations. Echo can then use that money over the year instead of having, one year, we had the assessor's office was very creative with this drive, and they, one of the employees, it may have actually been the chief deputy assessor at the time, actually, Clyde Ward, that went up to Nappy and hit them during their annual sale, and I think scored 50-pound bags of potatoes for five bucks a piece. And so we have this entire lobby, I want to say like 60 bags of 50-pound potatoes out there. Echo was very appreciative of the contribution, but, you know, potatoes only have so much of a shelf life, so that's when they said, you know what, we'll give you, we'll give you, you know, we'll turn a dollar into three pounds. And so that seems to be the preferred way of raising money. And a lot of creativity this year, Fire and Rescue, the way they earned all their pounds of food was related to a mustache contest they had. And whoever ended up with the least amount of money raised was going to have their mustache shaved. And that, believe it or not, was a huge incentive for them to go raise some money.
There's two that, there's two that clearly didn't win, but, right?
But just, and that's one of, I mean, we had other offices that were doing, you know, lunch sales, Frito pies, et cetera. So just a lot of contributions that went into making this a great success this year. And like I said, just what a, what a moment of pride for, for all of us here, and the job that our employees do, and the thoughtfulness that they have during this event. So, anyway, we'll get this in the trophy case.
Awesome, thank you.
And that's all I have for you tonight.
That's all you have?
Thank you to the staff.
Any elected officials, any reports?
Chairman?
Yes.
And members of the commission? I would just like to report that on November 21st, we conducted an audit of Precinct 78 for the general election, and it was a clean audit, no, no discrepancies.
Awesome.
And then on November 26th, the State Canvas Board signed up on all the results. So the election is finally over.
Very well. Congratulations on it being over.
Thank you.
Any other elected officials' reports?
Mr. Chair, the Festival of Trees is going to start on Wednesday. There's all kinds of things going on, but the gala is on Saturday. It starts at 6 o'clock at the Farmington Civic Center. Also, the San Juan College has the Luminarians display on Saturday. And on the 4th, at San Juan College, there's a Native American Arts and Crafts Fair at the Henderson Hall area.
Very well. Any other elected officials? Any reports from department heads?
Mr. Chair, County Commission? You may recall, last December, there was a grant opportunity from ORD, Outdoor Recreation Division. The grant was called a Outdoor Marketing Grant, otherwise known as OMG. And with your blessing, we, we went ahead and applied, and fortunate enough to get the grant. And at the time, we were looking at hiring a company to put together a gravel guidebook. These gravel guidebooks are all throughout the country, from Bend, Oregon, to Roanoke, Virginia. There's actually been two in New Mexico, starting in the city of Las Cruces, and now San Jose County. So we had the good fortune to fill out, you know, what this company was about, identify that gravel cycling is one of the most growing aspects in cycling. And within our areas, since we have numerous oil-filled roads, it was low-hanging proof for us to map out these gravel routes. Now, I, I want to emphasize, no new trails, no new right-of-ways were created. This was currently existing oil-filled roads, county roads, access easements, and so forth. And so when this company came out, looked at our area, they came out a few times, they were in awe with the natural landscape. In fact, that sunset picture right there, top 10 sunsets that they've ever seen in their life. And this grant is to-
And that was just a Wednesday afternoon.
Actually, it was a Monday afternoon. But, you know, when it was all said and done, this grant was to showcase our area. It's a marketing aspect, it's an economic aspect, it's an outdoor recreation aspect. And they're not just done with the, the area, they're not just going to pack up and leave. This is a two-year program where they're going to showcase San Juan County, not just to the rest of the United States, but also for those residents who live in San Juan County. Because if you get out on some of these oil-filled roads, you're going to see areas and beauty that I guarantee you, unless you're in the oil flows, you're never seeing. And, and that's what was highlighted. In fact, they put together a, a video as well. This is part of the marketing. So these books, there was 9,000 that were printed. 5,000 will go outside of our area and be distributed, currently already distributed to Texas, Colorado, Arizona, and other parts of New Mexico. 4,000 will remain in San Juan County, various bike shops, visitor centers, and so forth. And so you're welcome to pick one up. There are three, or anybody in our county, in fact, there's some in the back, if anyone wants to pick one up.
Thank you, and congratulations for the grant.
I didn't know there were aliens here.
Yeah, yeah. Now, if you go through the, the routes, and you're wanting to get there, you don't necessarily need a bike. If you had a Jeep, if you had an off-road vehicle, a racer, so forth, you can also visit some of these areas. Now, if they're single-track, you'd want to avoid that and so forth. You don't need the bike, the book, per se, to get out there. There is a scan code with each of the routes. If you scan that QR code, it will take you to an app called Ride GPS. It's a free app, and it'll give you turn-by-turn navigation, so that if you were out on a bike, you don't have to be flipping through the book to figure out where you're going. But part of the book is to showcase our area. What was highlighted on the cover is a T-Rex. In fact, we had learned through a visit to Farmington Seminar that we actually have a lot of fossils in our, in our backyard that we don't even know about. In fact, the Bisti Beast, as it's named, was the most intact fossil in all the world. And we wanted to highlight that, highlight not only the fossils, the arches, over 800, so that anybody from outside the area can take part in what we have, visit some of the businesses that advertise in the back, but also for locals, to take pride in their community, to go out to some of these areas that perhaps they've never been. So it's a collective effort for both locals and those that are visiting our community.
Thank you, Stephen. So, so if we do this, we won't get lost?
Hopefully not.
I know my directions.
And Mr. Chair and Commissioner, that's part of the initiative with this, is that we do have folks that want to explore, but are at risk of getting lost. And we don't want to tie up, you know, Fire and Rescue personnel. So hopefully, with this book, we'll advertise it, make more individuals aware of it. It, it gives a guide on when you should be out there, when dusk to dawn hours are, the various seasons, temperatures, things of that nature, just to keep people safe.
Anybody have any questions?
Just a comment. My daughter and her friend went to the New York Marathon, and they were talking about how parking is so hard that people walk everywhere, and they're slim. And we're such blessed with wide-open spaces to where people have, we have the trails, and now people can do bicycling, hiking. It's just a, a great place to be here in the Four Corners area. So thank you for getting this grant to do this.
It's a collective effort.
Any other department heads?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In light of the activity that's been seen on, on the Farming, City of Farmington, portion of the Pinion Hills Extension Project, and maybe some questions you've, you've received, Mr. Stark asked me to provide an update on what is the status of the county space of, of the Pinion Hills Extension Project. In order to do that, I probably have to give you a little bit of history. I, I think Commissioner Bexton frankly was the only one that was here when some of these decisions were made. And even one predates him. So in 2015, the San Juan County Commission authorized an $8 million bond in GRT proceeds to basically fund construction of the project. That was augmented by a $600,000 design grant through NMDOT, or it was federal money through FHWA, but administered by NMDOT. When I got involved in the project was in late 2016. Still very much in the design phase, which I had understood had kind of been accomplished in fits and starts since the late aughts. In 2017, a big decision was made. You might recall, Commissioner Bexton, that in July, which was early in your term, we had brought forth an agenda item for the commission to consider that would reallocate that bond for the construction of the San Juan River Bridge in Lee Acres or McGee Park. You might recall that, that bridge was in a state of extreme disrepair, and frankly, took priority over the Pinion Hills project for a number of reasons, namely, the timeline in which the, those bond proceeds needed to be spent, and also just the overall condition of the bridge. So staff continued to proceed with expending the federal grant for the design process, which was more or less gone when we reached a 60% design review, which was, was had with NMDOT in late 2018. At that point in time, we were facing a significant expenditure in right-of-way acquisition. It was estimated a little over a million dollars. Editorially, we, we were not having any success in our, our partner grants with City of Farmington to, to receive federal money for construction of the Pinion Hills project. So it was time to, to make a decision on, on the fate of the Pinion Hills, where we're going to expend $2 million in local funds to see it through design, or are we going to shelve it at a 60% design level, in the hope that, that funding opportunities would, would later present themselves. Didn't have a crystal ball. You'll recall in 2020, we were, we were impacted by our global pandemic, which resulted in levels of federal spending which had never before been seen. Fast forward to 2021, in House Bill 2, which is a state budget bill, roughly $40 million, was, was allocated to the Pinion Hills project. That was to be split between the City of Farmington and San Juan County. The, the split at that time was roughly $30 million to the City of Farmington, $10 million to San Juan County. We received our cooperative agreements to begin work on that project in October of 2022. So we were, we were moving ahead. In March of 2023, somewhat unceremoniously, New Mexico DOT reallocated all of the House Bill 2 money to the City of Farmington by way of an amendment to the statewide Transportation Improvement Plan. That was done at the MPO level. I was, I found out about that reallocation the day of the meeting. I was, I was pretty frustrated by it, but understanding the reasons that it was, it was ARPA-funded money that, I think, as you know, had an obligation deadline, or has an obligation deadline of December 31st of this year, and a need to be spent by December 31st of 2026. So currently, our project is funded by a residual of that, that House Bill 2 money, roughly $400,000. And our right-of-way acquisition is funded by a congressionally-directed spending grant that I had applied for and, and we received in the amount of, I think, $1.2 million. And that is to fund the right-of-way acquisition for the project. So we are funded fully through design, but we have no construction dollars once, once the design is complete. Our design has advanced to a 90% level. We'll be making a 90% designer view submission to NMDOT's North Region Design Office, I suspect, if not this week, before Christmas, which will initiate the last major design hurdle. The, the final review is really a review of all of our environmental and right-of-way certifications. So our design is progressing as it should. Obviously, the major hang-up is we're absent, what I believe to be, funding for an $18 million construction project. So working with Mr. Stark and Mr. Sivedra to make those legislative requests. We're still at the mercy of, you know, the state of New Mexico, or some other not-yet-identified federal opportunity that would fund the project. So that is the update I have for you, and I would certainly be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you. Mr. Mestas?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission. Allow me to use some of my time to introduce the new state police commander, Captain Clint Barnell, and I'll allow him to introduce himself to the commission.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I appreciate just a few minutes. I wanted to pop in, introduce myself. I've been with the state police for 28 years. I just recently assumed command of the Farmington District mid-October. Just started to get myself settled in, so I could pop in and just let you know that the state police is committed to, to San Juan County, and it's, it's people to provide public, public safety. Look forward to, to continue our partnerships with the public safety, rest of the departments that you have with San Juan County. I know off the fly, you may not have anything for state police, but I, I commit myself to regular attendance to the commission meetings, as I think it's important that we foster those relationships, because we're here for the, for the citizens of San Juan County, as all of your departments are. We'll work closely with Sheriff's Department, the fire departments, that kind of stuff, to, to provide great service for you guys. With that said, if you have any comments or questions for state police, I'll stand for those now. Anything you might have in the future, I'll, I'll have regular attendance here.
Does anybody have any questions?
Just make sure you stop those traffic violators.
You've heard it here.
Well, we're glad you're, you're here. Where were you transferred from?
I come from Internal Affairs. I've actually been in here, working out of the Farmington office since 2017, in a, in the command position over in Internal Affairs. I understand we've been without a commander here for about seven months. So a lot of work to do to get us back in the seat where, where I'd like us to be. But that'll slowly, maturely come. So it's, it's humbling to come back to Farmington. I cut my teeth here in 1996, out of that academy. So I actually worked with the sheriff on the, on the, on the road as a deputy. So it's humbling to come back and finish off my career, probably finish it off right here in Farmington. And, but I'm here for a while. So if there's anything that any of your people need, or any of your departments need, my, my office is wide open, and we'll work closely with, with whatever y'all need.
And Commander, thank you for that, and I appreciate you wanting to come to the meetings and attend. I have a real interest in Apohola Lake and the safety out there, and search and rescue. So I know we've had ongoing conversations, and I've talked with the sheriff about having, and been with Mr. Mestas, to having further conversations about what goes on out there, and just better safety.
Okay.
So after drowning back in July.
Okay.
But thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Any other department heads? Not seeing anybody jumping up. Brings us to comments input from the general public. Comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes, and to subjects that- Comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes, and to subjects the commission has not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the general public. If anybody has any comments, you're welcome to come up to the lectern and, and provide them. Not seeing anybody running to the front, and having exhausted the agenda, I'll declare the meeting adjourned.